I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, welcome everyone to the May 4th meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th.
A move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a motion to approve the financial report and dispersment of funds.
A move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, who's going to present the employee of the quarter, first quarter 2022? Andy.
Hello, how's everyone doing?
Doing great. Andy. And just to let everyone know, some of us have masks on, some of us don't. We had a slight outbreak several weeks ago in town hall and we're in a zero percent positivity for...
Almost two weeks now.
All right, very good, so better safe than sorry, I guess.
Okay, so I'm here, I have pleasure to announce once a quarter, the town recognizes their greatest assets once a quarter as far as employee. So the commission, the committee met last week, or four last week, and we had some great nominees, they were all deserving, but there was the one team here that stood out. Mr. Dan, would you come on up? You're not the one, bud. Sorry, you are the one, but you're not the one, just not.
I'm the advertiser.
The one or many person, not me, Dan Hamlin. So, this is from Dan's words, "One of the challenges of changing neighborhood, changing neighborhoods' reputation is to give some value to the longtime residents. This is the case in Hollinsworth Manor neighborhood, until recently, the neighborhood had no identifiable street signs, making deliveries and possible emergency services delays or delayed. Based on this, Danielle Kircher and Brittany Eva found an old map of the layout of Hollinsworth Manor. Danielle and Brittany then transposed this map by hand into a high-resolution file, which was then converted to a two-foot-by-three-foot sign. The fabrication of the sign demonstrates the residence of the Hollinsworth Manor, the commitment from the town to assist in the improvement of their community, words from Mr. David Hamlin. So this sign was installed in the community in April, it is standing now, and the mayor and the commissioners had a copy of that, and wanted to congratulate you two young ladies for being selected this quarter."
Bring your two ladies up here.
This is the part you hate.
All right, fantastic job, I gotta tell you, fantastic job. Congratulations. All right, perfect. Lou, can you get it, you're good, Charlie.
I think everybody's smiling with the mask on, but all right.
We'll take it off temporarily?
There you go.
Take it off temporarily.
Okay, here we go, once more, a lot of smiles.
Great job, please. She did it?
She did it.
Oh, she did, all right.
Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you.
Is it broken?
Yeah, but it's working.
And wanted to mention Commissioner Brumel has an excused absence today. Okay, next up, we have a petition for annexation presented for, let's see, do they want to go that route, or do we want to go, did I miss the...
The petition for annexation is presented for the board's approval today or acceptance, and then we'll introduce the resolution.
Okay, is someone going to read that in, Lou, or is that...
Yeah, I'll just explain generally what it is, the petition for annexation is by two parties, the owners of the property, Alexander Correa and Tiffany McLean, they own the property at 423 Delaware Avenue, it's roughly a half acre parcel that's improved, and they need water and sewer, so they're participating in adjoining town property, so they petition to be annexed. And this petition is the first step in the process of the annexation process, and well, the next step will be to introduce the resolution, which we have also prepared for today. So I would ask the board to accept the petition for annexation for the 423 Delaware Avenue property.
Very good, we have a motion to accept resolution A1-2022 regarding petition for annexation. Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The resolution that you mentioned, A122, provides that there will be a notice on May 6th and May 13th for a public hearing that will occur on June 15th. Once that public hearing is completed, then the annexation can be adopted and it will become effective forty-five days later. A plan has to be submitted to the county and also to the state regarding this property, but it doesn't pose any major problems because it's only a single family lot there. So that's two steps, the annexation petition and the resolution. I had Mark Turnbull check, and there is water in front of the property as well, ironically, there's a manhole right on the edge of their front lawn, so shouldn't be any problem running sewer to the manhole with the service of property, and of course, you have to tap into the water line there, so all those facilities are available to that property.
Perfect, okay, next, we, Lou, you're on with your report.
Yeah, the first item I have is Kids to Park Day. Whereas National Park Trust, a nonprofit organization dedicated to preserving parks today and creating parks towards for tomorrow, has designated May 21st as the 12th Annual National Kids to Park Day. And whereas National Kids to Park Day empowers and encourages children and their families to get outdoors and to visit parks and open spaces, fostering their appreciation for nature's beauty and diversity. And whereas it is important to introduce children to our national and local parks and to encourage the exploration of these natural wonders while providing a pathway to lead to more active lifestyles, reducing childhood obesity, and many other conditions that often accompany an inactive lifestyle. And whereas National Kids to Park Day is an invitation to both children and their families to participate on this special day, opening a horizon of interesting things to see, to experience, and to capture the imagination. And therefore, the mayor commissioners of the town of Elton hereby proclaim May 21st, 2022 as Kids to Park Day, and encourage citizens to visit Meadow Park and McKinney Park in Elton, Elton. So with that, I would ask the board to actually formally proclaim May 21st as Kids to Park Day.
Very good, do we have a motion to proclaim 26-2022 Kids to Park Day?
A move.
We got a motion?
A second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there anyone here for Kids for Park today? Nope, all right, we're signing the proclamation now, so. They're all out in the park, very good, I was rushing around to get that done.
Since we have a kayaker on the board, I have this next one special. This is the Proclamation Safe Voting Week. Whereas many citizens enjoy recreational boating, including fishing, water skating, waterfowl hunting, canoeing, and kayaking on the waters surrounding Elton and Hazel County. And whereas responsible boaters understand the importance of wearing personal flotation devices and carrying additional devices on their vessels. And whereas safe boaters attend U.S. Coast Guard-approved safe boating classes and assure their vessels have been U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Vessel paid to check. And whereas the mayor commissioners of town of Elton recognize the voluntary efforts of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Maryland Flotillas in promoting safe boating education practices through classroom instruction, vessel examination, and on-water patrols. Now therefore, the mayor commissioners of town of Elton to hereby proclaim May 21st through the 27th, 2022, a Safe Voting Week.
All right, we have a gentleman in the audience, we'd like to make his presentation too, if we could. And your name?
Daniel McCaffrey, flotilla commander of the Coast Guard Auxiliary.
Fantastic, glad to have you on board.
Happy to be here, sir.
And thank you for accepting proclamation 27-2022, do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion accepted, all right, this is yours, and we're going to get you right in here, and I'd love to get a photo with you.
A lot of smiles here. Where's that kayaker, I got him. Okay, once more. Gotcha, thank you.
Can you take a picture with the camera right there?
Absolutely.
Is kayaking in a raging flood a profession to you, Steve?
Here we go. Eins, zwei, drei, vier, fünf, sechs, sieben, acht.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Lou, you have a request from Trammell Crowe, I believe.
Absolutely. I got a email from Tom Rathburn, who represents Trammell Crowe. And they've entered into an agreement, and town obviously wants to enter to agreement too, with Friends of Cecil County Parks and Rec. In order to put bird nesting boxes out in McKinney Park, actually in the Fish Hatchery area, and they're going to put them out in the Stormwater Pond, along the Stormwater Pond out of Commerce Drive, of course, also too. And Tom had asked if the board would approve that, this arrangement, that they're paying for the boxes and everything, and I've already run it through our engineer for any regulatory issues, and there aren't any. And I'm sure the birds will be very glad to have all these boxes available to them out there in McKinney Park as well as along the Stormwater Pond at Commerce Drive. So I would recommend the board authorize the habitat nest boxes for Hatchery Park.
Do we have a motion to accept the proposal from Trammell Crowe on the habitat nest boxes for Elton Hatchery Park?
A move.
Second. Motion and a second, I guess I should have said for Jay Evans McKinney Park, I guess, right?
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter, it's the same place.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think that's all I have.
Okay, very good. We have a few different things, we have, we have an election coming up on Tuesday, this next Tuesday, May 10th, and not really sure if it's going to be a large crowd or a small crowd for the voting public, but I feel it's important that maybe we bring on two additional election judges so that we can have a nice flow going through the building. I'd like to appoint Ms. Anne Marie Hamilton and Ms. Kinsley Schaefer to additional members for the Board of Supervisors of the election. We have a motion? Second?
No.
I'm the only one left.
All right, well, I'm not even going to wait for Charlie because it'll be unanimous, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, there we go. I'll wait for the next one now. The next one is a planning commission appointment. There's a couple other things I wanted to say, saw, did he, oh, there he is. Okay, Charles, we went ahead and appointed two new members to the Board of Supervisors for the upcoming election, so we did that, that's your friend?
No problem.
Okay, the next one we need to, though, I believe, so our next motion, the next motion, the Elton Planning Commission is down a member, and I'd like to appoint Ms. Mandy Feeney as a new member to the Elton Planning Commission. Do we have a motion to approve Ms. Mandy Feeney?
A move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on Ms. Mandy Feeney? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. We've had, over the last couple weeks, I guess over the last couple months, we've had a little bit more violence in our town than I certainly ever want to see. And I just want to let the public know that we are doing a lot behind the scenes to do everything that we can to bring people together and get to the bottom of this. We're going to move forward with a few things under the chief's leadership, that we're going to get together and try to bring the communities together and see if we can put an end to this. It's disheartening, it's sad, it's, every emotion goes through our bodies up here each and every time we hear one of those gunshots being fired. And it's just not a pretty scene, it's just too many people losing their lives over senseless issues. And I'm making a commitment, and I know that our board will make that commitment too, we're going to do everything that we can to bring everyone together and find out what the public believes that we can do differently, how we as a town, as our town leadership can help get to the bottom of this. And I know we're all on board up here, and we're going to have a closed meeting with the chief to discuss a few of the things that has gone on over the last week and kind of bring the board up to date with where we're at. But I can absolutely let the public know that this is not falling on any deaf ears for us to get this, to do what we can, sitting up here to help our community, because it is our community, and everyone is affected, is affected by everything that's happening. Anyone else want to say anything about that issue whatsoever?
Just in my report.
Okay. That's all I have to report at this point. Commissioner Gibbons, anything today?
I think we start with him, he's already riled up.
All right, Commissioner Massimiano, we're going to start with you.
You guys are going to have to bear with me today because I got up probably this morning and I wrote down some thoughts, and I got about five minutes stuck here.
Go ahead.
You got five minutes, or you got a book there on your head?
I do.
Okay, I'll listen.
But it's good stuff, for the most part. Yeah, we can start out with the recent wave of violence that we've experienced, and that's where I started. In light of the recent violence we have had here in town, I would like to commend and thank the Elton Police Department for their bravery and vigilance. We all attended the annual EPD Awards Ceremony last week, and it was amazing to hear a year's worth of crime fighting condensed down to two hours. They do a lot more than a lot of people know, and I would like to find a way to share this information and these exploits with our citizens, many of whom are not fully aware of the risks that our officers face daily while they sleep soundly in their beds. Thank you, EPD. Next, I would like to touch briefly on our second annual fishing rodeo coming up on May 21st. Everything is coming along smoothly, and I am certain that last year's huge success will be duplicated. Over a hundred children participated last year, additionally, we had the accompanying parents and the many volunteers that stepped forward to make it a success. As I expect the same turnout this year, I would like to request once again that we supply two or three porta-potties on the site, and ask that DPW bring the large grill that we used last year to cook the hot dogs for the children. On a side note, I would like to mention that this year I will be incorporating a casting school and a knot tying class so that some of the children may learn those skills. I can skip that next part on council, it's about the election. Now lastly, I'd like to address my time on the board. Just over three years ago, this board and this town suffered the terrible loss of our dear friend and valuable colleague and Commissioner Mary Jo Jablonski. A loss that is still felt to this day, I get a little choked up talking about her. Although the mayor and remaining commissioners had the authority to simply appoint a new commissioner, they decided to pick a day and hold interviews with any town residents who were interested in stepping into the huge hole left by Commissioner Jablonski. Several greatly qualified candidates stepped forward that day, I was honored and deeply humbled when they asked me to step into this role. I have done my best to honor Mary Jo, this board, and this town. It has been a privilege and a pleasure to serve our community, and I would like to thank this board for not only providing me with the opportunity, but for the help, guidance, and education that they have given me over the last three years. For indeed, I have learned valuable lessons from each of them. From Commissioner Brumel, absent today, I have learned to pay close attention, and I say that because early on, I noticed that she was a great asker of questions, and that occasionally, she would ask a question about something that I had missed during the meeting. Either due to a wandering mind or Earl messing with me, I had missed information that I should have been paying attention to. I immediately recognized this flaw in myself and learned to stay focused, and I thank Jean. Commissioner Gibbons, he doubled down on that lesson for me. In addition, I have observed him on numerous occasions to speak up and speak his mind, all the while doing so with a calm and commanding voice and presence. Those qualities that Commissioner Gibbons possess and put forward are innate and not so easily learned, but I am trying. All I know is that I've got a good teacher, mentor, and friend. Thank you, Charles. From old silky smooth himself, Commissioner Piner, I've learned bad habits. But I've also learned that in addition to taking this role seriously, you can also have fun with it. It's allowed. Earl has also taught me that it's okay to speak up or speak out against the rare attack that might be launched against our town, or this board, or this administration. I think Commissioner Piner, myself, and the rest of us have learned from Commissioner Gibbons that sometimes you just got to let that dog out. And from Mayor Robbalt, my longtime friend, possibly the greatest mayor this town has ever known, so far. Elton's answer to P.T. Barney, Rob could sell a size-five shoe to Commissioner Piner and convince him he could get into it. From our mayor, I have learned and will continue to learn many things, he is probably not even aware of the impact that he has had on my social skills. I've watched Rob remain calm, cheerful, positive, and confident in many high-pressure situations. These are qualities we want in a leader, believe me. As with Commissioner Gibbons, some men and women seem to be naturally bestowed with these qualities, and they are not so easily learned. But again, I have, in Mayor Robb, a good friend and a great mentor. Rob is a clear example that you can be a boss, but not be bossy. As I sit here on the last meeting of my three-year term that I have completed for our dearly departed Commissioner Jablonski, I want to once again thank this board for the opportunity to serve. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to sit with you, learn from you, and serve our community alongside of you. No one can be sure of the outcome of next week's elections, but I am sure of one thing, if the voters see fit to keep us in our seats, I'm going to spend the next four years continuing to pay close attention, developing my skills, having fun, and doing my best to serve this community and its best interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
I don't know if that's a love letter. Anyway, I really, I'm speechless, Rob, you never really said anything good about me, but anyway. We dealt with stuff like that all the time, I had a couple things that I wanted to bring up, and that was, we had, I had a conversation with Mr. David Holden for Rudy Park, and he also had a project here in Main Street, I think. He was given an invite to the town if we want to come and see the work that's being done, I told him I'd be more than happy to, so if the board liked to join me, we could set up a date.
Absolutely.
And go and see how much work's been accomplished up there at Rudy Park, I told him I'd give my answer whether anybody's interested, so at least we have two for sure, not sure whether you guys want to or not. But if so, I'll set up a date and we can go take a look at it. I want to know if we can get the, either basketball hoops or the nets looked at at Marina Park, I'm not sure whether it's Mary or Public Park Hoop, I'm not sure who does it. Because someone asked me about seeing if we can get the nets replaced or whatever, because the kids want to start using it, summertime's coming around. And again, I want to piggyback off what Commissioner Robb mentioned, the EPD, I'd like to thank them for all the work they've done and they're doing in our community, especially for all these different crimes that we're having. And as the mayor of Robbalt said, we will be doing everything we can possibly to try to make town of Elton better and safer than we could possibly think about it, so.
Thank you, Charles.
To Rob Massimiano, thank you for those kind words, if it's God's, if it's God's request and God's effort, you'll be back on the board, you've done an amazing job, and it's certainly been a pleasure to work with you. Secondly, I support what the mayor said previously about the town of Elton, it's not a bad place to live, it's a lovely place to live, so we want to maintain that image, and the police department has done a fine job in maintaining that. One last thing, Massimiano, you forgot to say, that even though Rob can sell a shoe, size-five, to Earl Piner, he'd be dumb enough to buy another.
I wish I had thought of that. Oh, that was good.
I think I'm going to roast again.
Before I open up, before I open up the floor of the public, there was a couple things. We had the Historic Elk Landing Defender's Day over the weekend, it was extremely well-attended, it's an event that I'm looking forward to each and every year, and I strongly recommend it. If you didn't attend this past week, it's something that you'll really enjoy being a part of, but that was at the end of Elk Landing, it was a really, really, really nice event. And then I would be, I kind of got a headline news here for us all. There's currently a water outage taking place at Blue Ball Road, the structure supporting the valve gave way. Fortunately, the contractor is on site, we're waiting for parts from Baltimore, the businesses that are involved without water currently is Truma Medical, the YMCA, the Gourd Property, and Elton Boulevard and Triumph Industrial Park. The bad news with all this is, is that it probably won't be up and running till about eight o'clock tonight. So it's a, it's a pretty messy situation out there, but I'm not sure of all the details, other than I know that the contractor was doing work for our partner Infomark, and part of the structure gave way, and they're doing the best they can to get everyone up and running as soon as we can. With that, we open up the floor for... With that, we open up the floor for anyone who has anything to say to the town of Elton. I see a group here to the right. Are you, anyone here wanting to say anything for the good of the town, or for the town of Elton?
I guess I do.
Come on up, stand up, tell us your name and address, and tell us what you got.
So I am Chair for, and I am Harm Reduction Supervisor for Voices and Hope Cecil County here in Elton. I just wanted to come and share a little bit with you guys about what we do, what we can, what we can do, if you guys didn't know some of the things, because we are growing fast.
Would you be more comfortable sitting down?
Sure. I don't know. Do I look that nervous?
No, you're doing great.
Pull that towards you, the microphone.
Is it better?
Pull the microphone towards you. There you go. Pull it. There you go.
Yes.
Okay. So Voices and Hope Harm Reduction offers a lot of services. So a lot of people just think it's a needle exchange program. It is not. We train people in Narcan. That saves lives. We do homeless outreach. We do community cleanups. Next weekend, we are gonna be at Hollingsworth Manor, doing a community cleanup just around there. We go to the parks. Some of the Elton Police Officers work with us and let us know where some spots and homeless might be. We offer peer support, safe sex use. And I just wanted to come and like tell you about it and tell you that it worked for me. So I was actually banned from here. The Chief of Police there just lifted the ban. I was not allowed in this building because I was one of those people utilizing those services. You know, Officer Divine took my children a couple times and all the craziness. And I see him today, and we work together, and I'm the supervisor of Cecil County Harm Reduction at Voices of Hope with almost three years' clean. So I just, and we can offer and you can call us 24 hours, and we can help you. We can help the people in this community. It's not just me that survived addiction. We help many people get out of this and lessen the crime.
Yeah, listen, I really appreciate that. And as we're moving through, bringing our community together, maybe we'll have you part of that. It'd be great to.
I loved you.
Fantastic.
Yeah. And Jen Romano, you're here to talk about the other part of Voices of Hope.
Come on down.
All right. Hi, guys. My name's Jennifer Romano. I am one of the managers at the Cecil Community Recovery Center. So we like to kinda go from our harm reduction to our recovery center where we offer 24/7 peer support, phone and walk-in, recording the treatment for people. Nine times out of 10, when you come in looking for a bed, we're gonna get you there that day. On top of that, if we can't get you there that day, we have a respite program where after you get medically cleared, you can stay at the center. We offer transportation to the treatment. We also will come and pick you up if you complete. As far as early recovery goes, we have meetings seven days a week, recovery support meetings seven days a week. We will come and pick anybody up in the county. Like we are, we're gonna come bring you to the meeting. We're gonna come and take you home. We offer peer support all the time, walk-in, hang out with peers, and just, you know, it really helps in that early recovery.
When did you start the 24-hour?
Very recently. So we have four days a week where we have someone in the building. Three coming very soon, and then we do crisis calls 24/7. That's been a thing for a while.
Wonderful. I know that that was one of the challenges over the years, is that if someone's ready to give it up.
Yeah. Anytime of day. We're there for you. And I just wanna say, I'm in recovery, and I really feel like if something like this existed when I was trying to get clean, I might have not needed the handcuffs to get me there, you know? It makes a huge difference.
Understood.
So how are you guys tied in with the social service? Or do they connect with you guys in any way?
Like the Health Department?
The reason why I'm saying that, because when we used to reach out before to get support and help for people in that condition, seemed like there wasn't a place there. I'm just saying that.
Oh, yeah. So we work with all different facilities, all different parts, and we work with the Health Department. And we're gonna help you do whatever it is we gotta get done.
I was just wondering if they were reaching out to you guys just as well as, okay, that's one of the reasons why there's, and that was, I mean, really impressed to see you guys doing what you're doing, so I'm happy for you.
How are you funded?
That was a little.
Oh, we are a nonprofit organization. Yeah. My boss, if you'll answer that one.
Oh, she wants the money. Look at her. See, all that can shine until you send some money. She's, oh, I'm.
Hi, y'all. I'm Jennifer Turk.
Hold up just one second. Wait the mayor to walk back in a second. Is it okay? Okay. Go ahead. Yes, you can.
It's a long time. We should have been here sooner. Kinda did Rob will be here, but I'm Jennifer Turk, and I'm the Executive Director of Voices of Hope. So Voices of Hope is a nonprofit organization. We are people in recovery, family members and allies. We got tired of the barriers, you know, of trying to help people get better. So we got together in 2013. We started meeting every week over there at the Health Department. And then in 2018, we got our first capacity building grant from the Department of Health. And we set up a shop over there at the American Office Suites, 224 East Main Street. That's where our admin office is. We started doing the backpack outreach with training people on Narcan. You know, we had three things we really wanted to do. One was to get syringe services legal, so we could engage with people who use drugs and try to talk to them about getting well. We wanted an in-county detox, which we still don't have. We wanted a 24/7 recovery community center, which we're really close to getting. Oh, and there was one other thing we wanted was youth recovery supports in Cecil County, which we don't have many of that yet either. But we're working towards it, you know, we're on our way today. We have Voices of Hope Cecil, Voices of Hope Hartford. We have over 40 employees in Cecil and Hartford, but Cecil is the main location. So our admin offices and some of our services are on East Main. And our recovery community center is right outside the town limits in Cecil County at 409 West Plassey Highway. And that's where Syringe Services Fix Site is, and Recovery Community Center where you can go 24/7 to get access to treatment and wraparound treatment. We also do homeless outreach, and we'll do rides to shelters. So I'm a longtime Cecil County resident. I live on West Main Street. I know that issues have been here for a long time, and we're just people who are trying to address those gaps. And we try to address a lot of them because there are so many. But we can see the light at the end of the tunnel where there is solutions to the mental health, substance use, and homelessness crisis here that we've been in for a long time by just making common sense solutions. Like, somebody shows up and needs housing, give them a ride, right? Give them a ride to the shelter that's in Wilmington or Baltimore, you know? Somebody needs treatment, and they don't have any money, they need Medicaid. You know, get them enrolled in Medicaid, call the treatment place up, get them into the bed, or hold on to them until that bed becomes available. People wanna get off methadone, offer methadone and help them get off of it. You know, we're trying to do all these things, and we're being funded to do so, which is really great. And we want, I feel like there's been so many nonprofits that have said, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and have fallen short. You know, we've been really disappointed and frustrated with their systems, but Voices of Hope is actually doing the work. And now we're coming to town and be like, oh, yeah, you guys, we are doing these things. We want you to know about it. We want you to refer people to it. We're, it's not something we're going to do. We are doing it. And we just haven't used town or Cecil County taxpayer dollars to do so because we felt like, hey, it's out there. Why not get it and do it? You know, so that's what we've been doing. But we do want to get in position for some of the opioid settlement dollars that are coming down to be able to serve our community better. And some of the American Rescue Plan dollars that are out there that, you know, to help us with that full circle. So we have everything from the outreach to people who are still using drugs, helping them get into treatment and recovery, and supporting them in their long-term recovery, and being right there if anything should happen with them and their family. So we just wanna keep that full circle and ask you guys for some help as well. You know, to be honest, the hospital has fallen short to us for helping people with substance use disorders. Get treatment now when our families are taking people to the emergency department and being turned away. We're just getting fed up with it, you know, and we want to advocate any power that we can to say, please, you know, Voices of Hope is right here. Refer to us and let us take care of our people if they're not going to. You know, we've been asking them for years to kinda meet us here, and we just keep, you know, we've been patient through the Christianity Care Transition and all that. So we're just getting super frustrated at the end of our rope with that. So we'll be coming back to the table to you guys individually to talk to you about your beliefs and relationships, to see if you can help us advocate for, you know, warm handoffs for our people who are seeking help to actually get it that same day. But if you have any questions or wanna stop by the recovery center, we would love to have you. You know, Marcus is visiting with you guys a lot, so maybe he can, you know, schedule you guys a tour or anything like that. We really do appreciate your support that you have been giving us over the past years. We'd love to talk more about the Holly Hall Recovery High School. You know, if we can get some sort of support with that and start coming with a capital campaign to, that's something we're very interested in, the Board of Directors is. So hopefully, we can continue on. I could talk forever. I'm so sorry.
Well, before you leave, I did have a question. I think you partially answered it. Under the umbrella, I guess you have local agencies that I guess are hoping to join you, and you just mentioned the hospital, but evidently the hospital has pulled out somewhat, so you still have help from other agencies at this point.
So we have partnerships with the Cecil County Health Department, and the United Way of Cecil County supports us financially and otherwise. And, you know, the Video Lottery Terminal Grant with the Cecil County Government, they are very interested in recovery supports. We, we try to refer to all the community partners and work with them, whether it be Ashley, you know, youth empowerment stores, like you said, social services, rapid rehousing. We try to not recreate a wheel that already exists, but just keep that wheel going so it's accessible, right? There's so many good programs, but there's just these little things like transportation or having a phone, you know, that can prevent somebody from fully accessing those services that are already in the community. So we do try to empower everybody here.
So with the office funds, you've already given your mission to the Cecil County Government?
Yes.
So they know what you're after and what you wanna do?
Yes.
Last question is, have you reached out to the Board of Education in any way to be a part of them or to connect with some of the children who might be involved in some of the issues that exist?
And that issue is a great one. But I think, in my honest opinion, the Board of Education, you know, they wanna, they wanna do more with prevention and not so much with recovery, you know? We encourage, we just try to stay on the line of do all you can to prevent it. Please do early interventions. But they don't wanna invite the whole recovery community in there just because the problem is so big. You know what I mean? They're trying to keep a distance between us, and I totally respect that, you know? Once a problem is identified, then come to us. We'll help you, but they've been trying to keep their distance. Especially in this opioid death epidemic. It's just been so much trauma with the kids, and it's just hard. So I guess the answer is no, not really.
Well, listen, thank you for coming and making us, you know, the more that we're aware of the good things that are happening, and I have to tell you, you know, you have some successes right here, and that's huge for our community. And there's some things that you just told me that I wasn't aware of. And I do agree that that needle exchange was about one of the only things that we were hearing that was going that direction, but it's fantastic that you come and tell us more information. I'd like to invite you at least to come once a quarter, and let's build this relationship, right?
Next time we come, I'm gonna bring you guys the numbers. Hundreds of people we're engaging with at Hollingsworth Manor and Elton, you know, hundreds. And every opportunity to do a syringe exchange is an opportunity to talk about treatment, healthcare, housing, in a compassionate way, which seems to work, you know? But we will.
But before you leave, you know, churches normally have passions for people and whatever issues they may have. Have you ever reached out to them? Because they have an alliance, a group of churches that meet frequently. Have you ever met with them?
I know we've been having that on our agenda. Pre-COVID, right, we were meeting with, trying to get in with several different churches. But you're right. It's like at the end of the road, who's left but the Christians, right, to help people? But Marcus can probably talk more about his work with connecting with the churches and having a unified front.
Absolutely. So just to speak on that, Commissioner Gibbons, so Reverend Brown and I actually worked extensively when I was with the Multi-Crisis Team. We worked with law enforcement in Cecil through the Crisis Intervention Team. We've been hoping and trying to get that relationship back on track, particularly to this. I would say at the end of the day, when all sorts of social services are underfunded, our churches are a place of refuge and of assistance. So I truly understand how important the churches are. So we're hoping to keep that relationship going. But I think to touch specifically on the matter of, you know, we still see a little bit of stigma when it comes to some of our congregations, and that's completely understandable. It's an invitation to have a conversation about what recovery and addiction truly look like in our communities. But it's coming through those informal conversations. So once we continue to break past those barriers, remain transparent and open about what we're doing as an organization and as a community, we're hoping that we can open those doors and hopefully get a stronger working relationship. But it's definitely some of our pathway that we've been traveling on for some time now, and hopefully we can break through and reach our destination.
That's good.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town? Pat?
I just have a question. I call up the runaway dock down at Marina Park. Has that been repaired, or are there plans to repair it anytime soon?
My understanding, the dock is repaired, and it'll be done again.
Oh, okay. Because we're calculating, we'll be going to kayak again, and we really wanna use Marina Park as opposed to the county area.
Pat, when are you gonna do that? I'm sorry. When are you gonna do your kayaking?
It'll be sometime in September. We haven't said, we haven't said the exact date of the county.
I'd like to know as soon as possible.
I will, I will give you a personal phone call, Rob.
Thank you.
Does that work?
Anyone else have anything to say? Chief?
Yeah, well, just two things. One, I would like to say that Voices of Hope has been a great partnership with the police department. There's nothing more frustrating than dealing with some of our citizens, and if they need something, and we can't help them. And so they do answer the phone, and they are there. And we have officers that take people to their facility right outside of town on 40 Reg. Lane. I've asked them, actually, sort of like we recognize the program with handle with care at the school and kinda emphasize that on our award ceremony to bring some more light to that program. I've asked them to keep stats on who's actually referring, which of our officers are returning people to that program so that then we can recognize that too and increase that partnership. So that's just one thing. Thank you, guys, for what you're doing. It's nice to have somebody to call. We need help, right?
That's wonderful.
We're the one they call, but it's nice for us to have somebody to call too. The other thing I wanted to mention was just that Wayne Johnson had asked me to invite all of you to his Memorial Day services at Woodlands Campground. I think you're gonna be a guest speaker. And so that, I believe, is Sunday, the May 29th, and he wants everyone there. I believe he said 8:30 a.m., so just wanted to pass that along.
Earl, on Sunday, May 29th, Wayne Johnson invited, personally invited you to Woodlands Campground. So I just wanted to let you know that.
I notice it's not a setup.
I know this is not a setup.
Anything else, Chief? Yes, sir. Come on up. Please state your name and your address, sir.
All right. My name is Mark Witzel. I live on East Main Street.
Yes, sir.
Just moved in behind the central courthouse.
Okay.
Ellis Ballin Park.
Yes.
You know who that is? Okay. They actually created an intro to me, I guess. They were talking about the homeless situation in Elton, drug problems in Elton. I actually have a homeless individual in my home right now who I have off drugs, they're back on IV, they're ID, just got her through a job application and interviewed with Reddies.
Nice.
Next month, she will be having a job at Reddies. She has to have a complete clean record before going. She's no longer involved with the court system. She completed all the courses and the drug rehab programs on her peer support. So, you know, I don't do drugs, I don't drink, I work.
Okay.
I work here in Elton, I work for PAXA. I, I've been homeless for two years prior to getting this apartment. My issue is I drive everywhere, all over Cecil County. I've driven in the Bay, New York, on the Leagues. I see the homeless all the time. I see them with their sons, homeless, need food, need help, God bless, this, that, and the other. I understand with you guys, that other thing that is going on. The one thing I didn't hear you say, I'm just not, not able, you know, is that common sense. I heard about all the other things you learned from these guys, but not common sense. In my, my opinion, this is just me, I'm not saying this to you guys, this is me.
I understand.
I can't take all the homeless and help you get off drugs. I, not personally, you know what I mean? They're talking about they're looking for a clinic where their drugs, you've got property available, they need, why not just get it to them and let them use it? The Chesapeake City School, Elementary School, just closed down, they opened a new one up there on, on Bohemea, I'm not sure if you're aware of that. That school is not being used now. How about we let, turn that into a clinic? A drug rehabilitation clinic? I'm in charge of.
There you go.
This is all for town, nothing, you know what I mean? Um, houses for the homeless. Money has to come from somewhere to actually build the homes. I'm aware of that. But has anybody ever thought to contact Home Depot, Lowe's, American Home in Harvard, Sean Lumber, and say, hey, how about making a donation of building materials? Then give the homeless something to fight for, something that will give them passion enough, give them enough passion to actually get out of these homes, get off the drugs, stop shopping, stealing, standing out there with signs. Let them build their own homes where they're staying. Bring other people in, GPWs here, have them go out there, build a road right back to where the tent city is so that the police can get in there and, and help them, you know what I mean? They're out in the woods. I've been in contact with a guy, his first name is Scott, he's a, uh, a US Marshal, Be a Bail Enforcement Agent. I found one of his people that he was looking for, headless, out where I live, a pile of money, debt, last year. I found a couple other bodies. I'm tired of the, of, I'm tired of homelessness, but I can't do it by myself. I'm working with two elderly people because of a landlord situation and their memory challenge, and they're physically challenged. I, I, another person, Justin Heaton, who's a friend of mine, I'm trying to help her, her husband, okay? I mean, but I can't do it all. And Elton here had an opportunity to actually do something instead of paying lip service to the homeless, say, oh, well, we care, but we can't do anything for you. Well, then get companies and corporations that donate materials to help them. And, and it's a something for something. World says, hey, here's a tax rate. We'll give you a tax rate. You don't need materials, you don't need funds to help us, help them. We'll give you a tax rate. You know what I mean? I mean, this is what I'm looking at. I'm, I'm not looking at anything in particular. I mean, there is a way to end the drug problem, and I know how to do that, but I won't speak about that publicly, sorry, but I won't. Um, because I have a pain in the bull's eye on the back and I don't mind. But there is a way to deal with the drug addiction problem. You have the resources that cost you nothing, you give to the people who are involved with it. Now, I mean, that's, that's all I want to say.
Well, listen, appreciate your comments. Anyone have a?
Yeah, one question I need to ask you, and I've been under a lot of arenas hearing this, hearing that. To me, to you, what is a homeless person?
A person who has no home.
That's it? That's in the definition?
No, no, there's more to it.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying to you, to me, you're telling me that a homeless person is a person that has no home. All right, I know there are underlying circumstances. I'm not, and I, I don't need to know that, but you've been in so many places, I've been in so many places every year about the homeless. I have my own definition, but you said you have been in that position, so I'm saying to you whatever it is.
I've been without a home, I've been without family support, I've been out without medical support, work, everything. That's what homeless means to me, that you have nothing. You literally hit rock bottom. The last thing most homeless people have left to them is to try and get away from that in their minds, so where do they turn to? Drugs, alcohol, you know what I mean? Most of them, they get into trouble purposely just to get free hops and a cot in a jail. I'm sorry, but that's the truth. That's the way it is. I've been there. I've been on drugs, I've been on alcohol, I'm not a neither. And I didn't go through rehab to do that. I did that because of this. And I looked at my wife of 33 years of real life, I don't want to lose that. You know what I mean? People lose their children because they just don't have a job, they don't have homes for them, so part of the human service is coming to take children. Well, they got to have home, they got to go to school. Well, help me get back on my feet. They're not asking for a handout, they're asking for a handout and nobody's giving them. And that includes Elton. I see the sign, we are Elton, but Elton's not out there helping. Nobody's out there helping.
Fine, you gave me the definition. I know there's underlying circumstances, but I just wanted to hear, and particularly you are one of many people who say you're homeless. I don't know what each definition a person may have, but I thank you for giving me your definition so I can keep that embedded in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I know, I know we're going to cut this off, but I just wanted to thank you for coming in and speaking to us, the group from back there, but I have to say one thing, and I'm going to cut this off after saying this. I mean, I'm cutting it off because we can always set up a time to talk like this and get more education, but for the knowledge, that's first, best thing up here, we follow codes, for one, not nothing, I'm not going to get into the legal part of it, but you just can't take a person's property and take and give to somebody because it's available.